This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, good afternoon. This is Monday, September 8th, 2020. It is 3:02 PM and I'm calling the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. We have several things we need to talk about today, including our second state of emergency that was filed early this morning. So we have changed our agenda from what you maybe previously saw earlier to basically reflect the emergency that we're dealing with at this current time. So I do have both Commissioner Hall and Hunt on the phone, so we do have a quorum of all three commissioners present.
Katie, this is Doug. I'm not sure if I heard you correctly, but this is Tuesday, September 8th.
Sorry, Tuesday, September 8th. Thank you, Commissioner Hunt. Yes, Tuesday, September 8th. And I think it's wrong on our agenda, so we will try to fix that as well. Thank you. We are not going to do our recognition and proclamation as planned. We're going to move that on to probably next week. So next up then is the adoption of the consent calendar. These are items of routine nature that either commissioners or staff can pull for further information or discussion. Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion.
This is Doug. I'll move to approve the consent calendar as submitted.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Great, motion carries. Great. Casey, can you scroll down here? All right, reports. First up is our emergency declaration that was done early this morning at about 7:30. First, I'll have Wayne talk about the emergency declaration, and then I'd like an update from Sheriff Landers and our emergency manager, Jenny Damaris, but we'll start with Wayne.
Good afternoon, commissioners. As you're well aware, of course, we had some changes in our weather that occurred starting yesterday, and that resulted in a couple of wildfires coming out in the county. Actually, this particular problem is happening all across the state of Oregon. We're just one of many areas, as you'll hear, I think, from the sheriff and from Jenny, that this is occurring across the state. We gathered for an emergency meeting at 7:30 this morning, looked at the situation, assessed what was going on in here, and the board then in the emergency meeting adopted Resolution 9-20-271, which declared a state of emergency. That allows us to access additional resources from the state of Oregon. My understanding, and maybe we get some confirmation from others who are more in the know than me, is that the governor has either already or will be declaring a state of emergency for the state itself because of the wildfire situation. But we have forwarded this on to the appropriate authorities and are seeking to access now additional resources to help us fight the wildfires. Any questions on that?
Commissioner Hall, questions?
No questions.
Okay, Commissioner Hunt? Commissioner Hunt, are you still there?
I'm here. Sorry about that. No, I have no questions, but I'll also state for the record, I'm not sure what the recording shows, but I do not have internet. Therefore, I'm only able to participate by phone.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, a large portion of our county does not have internet right now, so you are not alone in that. All right, can we get an update from, let's start with maybe emergency management. Jenny, can you provide us an update?
Sure, happy to do so. Thank you, commissioners. So county emergency management was activated. We knew that we had some extreme weather conditions, and we were kind of mentally prepared for that until you get the call. So we requested by fire district chiefs to activate the EOC in support of their operations, primarily focusing at the north end of the county. We had two fires, Echo Mountain and Kimberly Mountain fires. Those two fires have now been combined, not physically, but virtually as the Echo Mountain Complex Fire. So that is the new terminology for the Lincoln County Fire, as it will be referenced for state and soon to be posted regional mapping systems. So we came in, Level 3 evacuations had already been issued right there at the incident command post level. So those evacuations were done by both fire and law enforcement officers on scene. As the evening pursued or the early morning pursued, additional evacuation levels were issued for those two neighborhood areas. Both Level 1s, which is the Be Ready, Level 2, Be Set, meaning Get Ready to Go, and then Level 3, that means Go Now. So we have a variation of those levels in both of these separate fire areas. Also during that time, we were aware early on that Benton County had a significant fire near Alcee. So that did cause some traffic delays for traffic and emergency vehicles, and some of our resources traveled over to that area, Seal Rock and Walport, to assist them. Then we had a grass fire in our own area, in the Walport District area. Several agencies were participating. That was finally contained and handed over to Oregon Department of Forestry, and our services released. Some complications that we have had, as you might imagine, is the considerable amount of downed trees and power lines in various degrees across the entire county. Some of that also prompted some of our utility companies with proactive power outages to prevent future fires potentially caused by transformers, power lines, and arcing. So our community members have experienced a wide variety of power outages, some short-term, some still without power, and then the complication of not being able to travel around the county, which limits our public safety for fire EMS response, law enforcement assisting. But really, it really hampered our ability of Oregon Department of Forestry resources and other fire districts to travel to those locations to assist their sister partners. Good news is OD, Oregon Department of Transportation, your own county Public Works Road Department, they have been working very, very hard to try and get those roads accessed at least passable so activity can get going again. It sounds like perhaps ODOT, the most significant one, has one lane of traffic open, and I think even Highway 18 may also have a lane open. We may see some of those closed down temporarily again, while they do some of their final cleanup or utility crews go in and actually reset those lines. So it may not be open completely, and we may have some intermittent shutdowns. Thinking about your populations that have had to be evacuated, our GIS folks are really right on the spot with helping us get us data information, which is helpful for incident command, as well as us in the EOC and our Red Cross shelter partners. When we look at those polygons of locations that have been evacuated, and we're incorporating all levels, because most folks in a Level 1 or 2 probably have already left their homes, and then they're not able to return to those areas. So when you sort of add up those numbers on average, looking at structures, so it could be a house, it could be a shop, it could be a garage, it could be a business, we're probably looking at well over 400 to 500 structures. So when you put that into a population of number of people that have been displaced, probably about a third are non-residential, and you work that down to three to four persons per household, it is a very significant number. Kudos to our Shinnick Winds partners, who immediately opened up their area to be able to provide evacuee location, so they would have a place to come inside, use restrooms facilities, some refreshments. Also, our animal services folks have been on standby to try and assist those folks that may need a temporary shelter or mobile shelter services for animals or pets that are there. We are now working with the American Red Cross to be able to try and identify which of those folks, now that we know from fire that this is going to be well into another nighttime operation, and those folks will not be able to go back home, determining how best to meet their sheltering needs. Normally, in a traditional situation, we would open a congregate shelter, but with COVID, that's not really possible. So we've been working, as many counties are with Red Cross, to be able to do hotel-type operations for those individual families or individuals so that they have a place to go with separation from other folks that are also considered evacuee. I feel like it'd still take us another two or three hours to really get a good idea from the American Red Cross as to exactly how many people have requested sheltering. A lot of folks still like to go to friends and family houses first before they actually have to utilize the Red Cross sheltering services. So we may not really have those hard numbers until sometime tomorrow morning. I think, looking at my notes that I have here in front of me, I think that was the bulk of the information that I wanted to provide to you, and I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have for me before we hand over to Sheriff Landers.
Jenny, I have one kind of clarifying question. You said earlier there was 400 to 500 structures. Are those structures that have been impacted or structures that have been burned or damaged?
Right. So those are actually what we, when we look at the polygon, when we draw our evacuation levels, there were close to 400 to 600 structures within those polygons. Preliminary numbers that we're seeing for possible destroyed structures or damaged structures, those are very tentative numbers, and we know that we have received some damage at both locations of fires. But we really prefer not to release that information until fire command makes it official and lets us know what the total number of loss is. But we do have some numbers of structure loss in both fires at this time.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Hall, questions for Ms. Damaris?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so you indicated the two, the Echo Mountain Fire and the Kimberly Mountain Fire are not physically joined, but they're now being referred to as the single Echo Mountain Complex. Do we have an estimate on total acreage that's involved in flames or has burned or is threatened within the structure?
Great question, Commissioner, and this is generally the, this is generally sort of the information that we have up front for you. But because this was a very challenging fire, and we were limited on the number of resources from Oregon Department of Forestry and the geography of the fire, it did take a delayed time for Oregon Department of Forestry to be able to get the right people in there to begin doing what you might refer to as a scene size up or a mapping of that particular fire. So we don't actually have that information yet. I do have some preliminary numbers, but that was actually from a couple hours ago, and it would be considered unofficial. But the Echo Fire was about 46 acres, and the Kimberly Fire was about 123. But again, Commissioner, that was a couple hours ago, and we're really waiting for Oregon Department of Forestry to do their analysis assessment. Then they upload that information into the state website, and then it will become available to us, as well as the general public, because it will be added to all of the other fires that you see, not only in Oregon, but the Pacific Northwest. Because if you go there, I was there not too long ago, and our fires are still not on that page.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. And again, to the best of our knowledge, everyone has been able to, involved in evacuation, has been able to evacuate safely. We're not aware of any injuries or incidents, that it's going smoothly, as can be hoped for at this point. Is that correct?
Yes, I've not received any information regarding businesses, residential, animals, any personal injury type loss. We do know that we have had an injury within the Oregon Department of Forestry responders, and we wouldn't release any of that information. That would be forthcoming from their public information officer. So we do know we have at least one responder injury at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hunt, questions?
Yes, so the county has declared an emergency for the fires, the wildfires, in addition to the emergency that we've declared for the virus. I guess my question is, I recognize that when you look across the state of Oregon, there are numerous fires in numerous areas. But does our declaration of an emergency give us any advantage as far as accessing additional resources to help us fight the fires?
So, good question. A little bit of a yes and no, Commissioner. My apologies. It's going to be a little bit of both. One, so it does assist the county, especially if that fire were to move into the unprotected area. Right now, it is a North Lincoln Fire District, that's where it started. But if it was to move out of that area, you've already got your emergency declaration in place. So if you needed to do a delegation of authority to allow for that structure protection, that piece would already be done. Again, it also helps us with any financial reimbursement. There's sort of a threshold or a cap in order for it to be considered a sort of, pardon me, a recoverable cost type fire, which we have not had to do any of those in my entire almost nine years here. So that would be very new for us, but that emergency declaration helps with that. And yes, to your original point, Commissioner, the declaration does help, because when I was on the morning call this morning at 9:30, and they were running down the list of counties, and even some of the larger counties, they had not yet done their emergency declaration. And I always said, nope, our emergency declaration with Lincoln County was done at 7:30 this morning, because we've got all of our ducks in a row. So if we did need to request resources, which we did through North Lincoln Fire District directly, because it's in their district, then those pathways would already be established. So having a well-oiled machine with our policy group to be able to enact that emergency declaration, knowing why they should do it, and having it done effectively is very beneficial to you as a policy group and to all of our community members and public safety agencies.
All right, thank you. As a follow-up, what resources are we in particular need of?
So specifically to that, Commissioner, those are going to be directly related to the fire strike teams or task forces that they may need actually at the fire scene. Those resource requests, I'm actually not very familiar with what their requests are, because it is in North Lincoln's Fire District, so they are able to make those requests themselves directly to Oregon State Fire Marshals for those assistance. I'm kept apprised of that through our state fire marshal liaison, Shannon Miller, who was here with us earlier today. But so far, other than adjacent partners, adjacent counties, but that request to the state is in the form of strike teams, which is engines and crews specifically for that type of brush fire.
Okay, thank you.
Very welcome.
All right, Jenny, one more question for you. If you live in North Lincoln County, in the affected area, and you're not sure if you need to evacuate or not, or you're not sure if you're in a green zone or red zone, and of course, many of those homes don't have power or internet at this time, what's the best place for someone to call to find out if they need to evacuate or not?
Great, yes. So we have our traditional emergency management call center, which is currently still being used for COVID. So we've just gently transitioned that to a different phone number, which is on our website, and I'll state it now. If anyone has a PIN handy, that will be 541-265-0616. That's one of our primary numbers that we use here in the emergency management office. And we have been fielding calls, Commissioner, pretty much, I guess, pretty close to almost 10 hours now. About one call every 30 seconds to a minute, so we know that folks are finding that number. They're navigating either through another public safety agency, through the website, or through the emergency notifications that we send them through Lincoln Alerts. We provide them with that telephone number so that we actually have real people able to answer their questions for them.
Okay, thank you. Sheriff Landers, anything else you would like to add?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, yep, I'm sorry. I dropped off earlier, but I caught most of Jenny's report. So yeah, good afternoon, Commissioner Curtis Landers, Sheriff. I am calling and also can't get through on the cell spot. It's still sunny up here. But in the areas of the fire, Highway 18 is open now, both lanes. The fire crossed. It was very hazardous for a time, because in fact, we were up there and actually seeing limbs on trees hanging over the highway that were burning. So there was a good reason for closing that, but they have cleaned that up now. And the other thing is, the wind shifted a lot up here while we were up here, and we had to really look at our mapping and add to our evacuation list, which included...
Oh, I think we lost you.
So Commissioner, I can just add that the Sheriff Landers is going to finish his statement by saying we added the Panther Creek area to the Level 3 evacuation. So that was a very large polygon that we just added, oh, maybe just a little over hour, hour and a half ago.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions from commissioners on this emergency? Then we'll move on to our other one.
Sheriff Jacobson? Commissioner Hall, just curious, I mean, within the evacuation areas, are there any spots? I think, I don't know exactly how to ask this, but are particularly threatened, particularly close to the fire? And if so, I mean, are we, are those places where we're, you know, we've got people going door to door?
I can answer that for you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
So, yeah, Lincoln County Sheriff's Office deputies did a unified command with fire and Oregon Department of Forestry to determine where those most vulnerable areas are. We initiated additional evacuation levels mid-morning, and that was the decision for this one later this afternoon. Patrol deputies did go door to door, even though some of the areas had already been canvassed once already. We have a specific form that we leave at each door or property to make sure that some form of information has been left at that location in the event that there was not a person there at that time. Perhaps they were out in the field, or in the backyard, they were at the neighbor's house. So we try and do the telephone, Lincoln Alerts, and also door-to-door notifications for those locations. And yes, you are correct in your statement, there are some polygons or neighborhood-type areas that are in a more vulnerable position to the fire, that would be considered more threatened or potential for loss. And so what happens there is that the fire commander structured fire, because we have, the way it works is, your traditional fire district folks, they do more of structure protection, and then Oregon Department of Forestry focuses on the fire itself, which would be more of the wildland area. So, but when they kind of merged together in the beginning, pretty much everybody's on base to do that, and then they split that out a little more. So I know after multiple conversations with Chief Dollman about where he was placing incoming units to do that protection of those structures, and they have a very defined evaluation system to determine if that property is a risk for the responders, can it be saved, is there a good fire line? So they have a lot of calculations and assessments they do on the fly to be able to make those decisions. And it can be on a one-to-two-house basis, or it can literally be entire blocks of homes that they make those decisions based on the fire condition.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Hunt, anything?
No, I think for the moment I'm okay. I appreciate the hard work of all the firefighters. I had a brother who fought forest fires, and it's a very challenging and miserable job. So thank you to all for their hard work.
Yeah, I agree. All right, thank you, Jenny, and Sheriff Landers. If you guys need to go off back to your other duties, that is totally understandable. Next up, Lincoln County Public Health COVID-19 update presented by Rebecca Austin. Rebecca, are you on the call? Is there anyone else from Public Health on the call? Okay, we do know we've been having a lot of outages with internet and phones throughout the county, so it's possible we just weren't able to get someone to call in. So Wayne, give a Phase 2 update?
Just a very quick update, and of course, we've been focused today on the wildfires.
Wayne, I'm sorry, this is Doug. I, as you know, track the data daily from the Oregon Health Authority, so I can give a brief update. As of, this would be the big data as of September 6th. So as of September 6th, we had 470 cases. We had four cases reported the last week that ended on the 5th. And so far, we have conducted 8,039 tests that were negative. At the state level, there are now 482 deaths. We've been at 13 deaths since August 24th. There are 28,190 cases, and they've conducted 575,596 cases, although that's a little bit outdated since they don't provide, excuse me, tests, since they don't provide test data over the weekend. But that, I guess the good news is, you look at our positivity rate for the last week that ended Saturday, we were at 1.1%. And the week before that, we were at 4.4%, and a week before that, we were at 7.1%. So we're certainly headed in the right direction.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Doug.
I'm sorry. This is Sheriff Landers. I'm back on again. Sorry, I was sitting still when I, I guess I lost you. I didn't know what all you heard, but just to sum it up, the evacuations went very well. People are very cooperative. A lot of assistance from our volunteers, some search and rescue, and everyone else up there. So the wind has died down, so hopefully that'll be good news for the firefighters and they work on the fires. So are there any specific questions?
Hey Sheriff, Jenny kind of finished your update for you, and we did get through some questions. I'll see if anyone has questions for Curtis Landers. Claire, do you have a question?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Hunt, anything for the sheriff?
Not relative to the wildfires, but I do have a question relative to the Labor Day weekend and the virus. But we'll let Wayne go first, if appropriate. Well, I'm just curious as to what kind of activities did the deputies pursue? And were there citations issued to anyone? How was the weekend?
So I wish I knew. Kind of put me on the spot. I've been here since early this morning and really didn't get a too large of an update, except for all that was happening from late last night when the high winds and the fires started. But I did drive up, I was up at the Otter Rock area in Morocco on Sunday, and things looked like they were doing well. We had code enforcement that was there throughout the day, and when I was up there, parking looked like it was going well. So I know that's one area that we, was a problem area that we were trying to address. And it looked like, at least at the time that I was up there, things were going well. And I didn't hear as far as the activity report from everyone else, so I can get that information and get back to you. There were a lot of people in town, I know that.
All right, well, certainly, under the unusual circumstances of wildfires, I hate to use the word unprecedented, because we've used it so much with the virus, but certainly the wildfires are, again, unprecedented. So I certainly understand the challenges that you've had and appreciate the hard work of the deputies. And when there's some time, I'd appreciate an update.
Absolutely, and thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, definitely, as you know, unprecedented in here with COVID, and now the fires. One of our deputies, just a quick story up there to kind of make your point, is that he came from eastern Oregon, where he was accustomed to doing these evacuations. And we were just talking, I said, well, this is 37 years from me, this is my first time I've done a fire evacuation. So that's just how unprecedented it is for us here.
Again, thank you for the hard, especially the deputies, too. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Sheriff, and we know you have other duties to get back to, to help people evacuate. So if you need to get up a line, that's fine. Thank you for joining us today.
Okay, I'll stay on watch. I can. We're heading south, and I'll be on the call at 4:30 with you.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, back to COVID-19 update. Thank you, Doug, for those numbers. And Wayne, a Phase 2 update from you.
This is a very quick update, too. Based on your decision on the 31st to change the target date for our Phase 2 reopening to September 29th, I officially notified the Oregon Health Authority and the governor's office of the new target date. And with the Oregon Health Authority, we told them that we would continue to be working with them on looking at the metrics that the county would be needing to meet, and also formally requested that they schedule a time with us prior to the 29th, the week before the 29th, to see exactly where we are at that time. before the 29th, to see exactly where we are at that time, and to inform you and your decision-making going forward. At the same time, in our request to the governor informing her, I just wanted to confirm or reconfirm my understanding that we don't actually have to resubmit our application to go into Phase 2. We would probably update, as we get closer, update any changes in the original criteria for going into Phase 2, if there are any changes there. But we did want to reconfirm that we don't have to do an application, but instead, we'll just all be examining the numbers as we get closer to the 29th, and then move forward. So that's it for our update at this point.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hall, questions for Wayne?
Nope, seems pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Commissioner Hunt, questions for Wayne?
No questions, but I'll provide a bit more information on the situation as far as the virus. At our last meeting, we were out of compliance with only one of the six public health indicators this past Thursday. We're, that changed, the one indicator that we were out of compliance, and we now are in compliance. But there are two others that we are now out of compliance. So two different indicators from the one we had the week before, which, again, I only bring up to emphasize the volatility of the criteria that is part of the information that's analyzed in determining whether or not the governor would approve a reopening, or, excuse me, approve, move, movement to Phase 2. That's all.
All right, thanks, Professor Hunt. I would just reiterate that I think this next time we have a discussion prior to the date that has been selected, that we really get OHA on the phone to basically be at our meeting with us and talk through that data, and be clear about whether or not we qualify or not. I think that would be helpful to be able to have that discussion. So, and I know that counts on that.
I was going to say, if I may, I agree, and I think that was part of the amendment to the motion last week. We expect OHA or state representatives to meet with us to address those issues before our Board of Commissioners meeting on Monday, the 27th.
And on your behalf, commissioners, that's what I formally requested.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, commissioner reports. I will just say, I don't have a report to share, other than just really, really thinking about all the people impacted by fires here in Lincoln County. And this last day, it's been, again, we say it a lot, but it's an unprecedented time for our community and for our county, and just really thinking about everyone in North County right now. But no official report for me. Commissioner Hall, do you have anything to report?
I do not.
Okay, Commissioner Hunt?
The only report I would make is, again, I don't think it can be said too often, but I appreciate the hard work, not only of our public health and Health and Human Service staff, but certainly now our public safety and first responders. Incredible times, and really appreciate, really appreciate the incredible work that all of our people are doing on behalf of our residents. So your hard work is recognized and appreciated.
Well-stated, Commissioner Hunt. All right, with that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn our meeting. Our next Board of Commissioners meeting is scheduled Monday, September 14th, 2020, at 3:00 p.m. You know, if needed, we can always have an emergency meeting later on this week, if there's something we need to come back together and talk about in relation to our wildfire emergency. But our next scheduled meeting is Monday, September 14th, 2020, at 3:00 p.m., virtually. With that, I'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.